All right. Can I call this zoning commission meeting of October 22nd, 2024 to order? Can roll be taken, please?
Mr. McNulty?
Here.
Ms. Trubellis?
Here.
Ms. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Pierce? Mr. Avada Nula?
Here.
All right, so we are assembled today to read your zoning case Z O N dash 24 dash 07, Vision Development. I was gonna lay some groundwork first. We will have the staff report presented by our Planning and Zoning Director, Robyn Duffy. Then we will have the applicant an opportunity to speak about the project and explain it in their words. And then I will open the floor to public comment. I will remind the public, this is a public hearing, please be civil. We'll take, give your name, your address, and then if you could keep it concise to like five minutes and try not to repeat what your neighbor or colleague is saying. If you want to do that, just say, "I agree," because we want to keep it short. Because of this complicated application, I do not believe we're gonna vote on it tonight. I think we will end up making suggestions for a future meeting, judging by the amount of material we have to discuss and the number of people in the audience. So that being said, unless the commission has anything else to add, Robyn, if you would like to give the staff report, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Trubellis.
Thank you.
We are here to discuss case Z O N dash 24 dash 07. The applicant is Vision Acquisitions for a site owned by Home High LLC. The site has an address of zero Columbus Pike. There are two parcels in question, those being 318-23002-001-003 and 318-23002-001-002. The two parcels in question, so the parcel that is to be amended is roughly 25 acres. There are also just under 10 acres on the parcel to the north of Home Road, which does include that right-of-way. As a reminder, the current zoning for the property is Plan Commercial and Office District, or P C D. The applicant is requesting to amend the currently effective P C D plan to allow for the construction of 220 multifamily units on the southern 15.1 acres of that 25-acre parcel. The property was originally rezoned from Farm Residential, or F R 1, to P C D in 2004. The development plan was then amended in 2017 under zoning case Z O N dash 17 dash 04 to allow for a number of commercial uses on the site and to update the development standards. That is the most recent amendment, and therefore the current zoning of the property is that zoning case Z O N dash 17 dash 04. In terms of how this property is referred to in the comprehensive plan, it is located in SubArea 8 of the 2018 Orange Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The recommendation 8 dash 5 reads that the east side of Gooding Boulevard preferred use is planned office use as transition to residential, no single-use big-box retail in this subarea. The parcels are surrounded to the north by Farm Residential District and Home Road. To the south is Planned Commercial and Office District on the Delaware County Library. To the east is Planned Commercial and Office District on the other side of U S 23 or Columbus Pike. And then to the west is the Single Family Plan Residential District and the Clear Creek Neighborhood. On the following page, you can see a snip of the proposal site plan that, I'll remind the commission that north is to the left on that aerial view, so right to the south. And you can see that the proposal is for the southern portion of this site that is just south of Home Road. So this amendment would effectively split the district into three parcels. One is on the north side of Home Road, and then the current single parcel south of Home Road, which was shown in that picture, would be split into two separate parcels. The northern of the two parcels, current parcels, would remain as unchanged under the current Planned Commercial District, and then the southern 15.1 acres would also stay in the same Planned Commercial District, but with a development plan that allows multifamily uses. This would be a divergence to allow multifamily residential uses in the Planned Commercial and Office District. The proposal is for 220 total multifamily units. The majority of the units would be within four larger apartment buildings identified as Buildings G, H, I, and J, while the remainder would be in smaller carriage houses above garages in separate buildings. Building H and I would each contain 54 units, while Buildings G and J would each contain 50. And then the carriage house buildings identified on the development plan as A, B, C, D, M, and N would be carriage houses, which would contain two units each, again above garage space. Let's see. The four larger apartment buildings are all just under 50 feet in height, marked as 49 feet, eight inches. 50 feet is the maximum allowed per the code and the approved development plan. Buildings G, H, and I, and J all list a stone veneer at the bottom, but do not list the siding material for the remainder of their elevations, so we would want to see those called out. The carriage house buildings list L P siding as their primary siding material, which is fine per the development text. However, the garage buildings list vinyl siding as their primary siding material. Vinyl would not be permitted under the current development text, so the material should either be changed or a divergence requested for that material. Elevations are also included for a clubhouse, which is marked on the site plan, as well as a fitness building labeled as Building F in the center of the site. Two standalone buildings for garages are also proposed, listed as Buildings K and L. A total of 14 buildings are shown on the site plan, Buildings A through N inclusive of everything I just went over. The building setbacks would be as follows, and that'd be 80 feet from Columbus Pike, 70 feet from the southern property line, 30 feet from Gooding Boulevard, and then 70 feet from the northern property line to be split off roughly in the center of that one In terms of amenities, one clubhouse is proposed along with a fitness building. There is an amenity space that's shown on the site plan, which appears to show a swimming pool and possible pickleball court. However, the exact acreage and more specifics are not known. We would like to see that called out in a little more detail. For parking, a total of 423 parking spaces are proposed. 50 of those would be in garages and 373 service spaces. Per Section 21.01E of the Orange Township Zoning Resolution, three spaces are required per multifamily unit, thus requiring a divergence, as this would require 660 parking spaces total for the 220 units. There are also parking setbacks on the property compared with the building setbacks. The parking setbacks would be 48 feet from Columbus Pike, 45 feet from the southern property line, 45 feet from the northern property line, and then 10 feet from Gooding Boulevard. As for landscaping, a mix of deciduous evergreen and ornamental trees are proposed for the site, as well as various shrubs. The evergreens appear to mostly be planted in the building setback along Columbus Pike, as well as the northern property line to be split off. The trees do meet the street tree requirement of the development text. The shrubs are largely planted along the parking areas, as is required per the code. However, per the development text, a continuous three-foot buffer screening should be provided to screen parking areas along all public streets. The landscape plan indicates that the shrubs in these areas would be 24 inches in height, so the landscape plan should be updated to the three feet, or a divergence would be required for this as well. In terms of lighting, a total of 45 various light fixtures are proposed to be mounted on 14-foot lighting poles, as well as 20 wall-mounted fixtures, while the fixture examples provided by the applicant are listed as full cutoff fixtures, as is required. We do note that all fixtures must be downlit, or a divergence would be required, and it did not seem that those fixtures were downlit. However, foot candle levels near the property lines are all within the requirements of Section 21.12 of the zoning resolution. The applicant has requested a divergence from Section 21.12 H 3 B for a light uniformity ratio of 16 to 1, which does exceed the code requirement of 10 to 1. In terms of signage, the applicant is proposing one monument-style sign with a total display area, excuse me, of 36 square feet with a height of six feet. The sign would be set back 20 feet from Gooding Boulevard and would have halo-illuminated channel letters mounted on standoffs. In terms of the access, applicant is proposing two full accesses on Gooding Boulevard with no access on Columbus Pike. An existing sidewalk does run along the east side of Gooding Boulevard, which would remain, and a number of interior pedestrian walkways are proposed throughout the site. So there are a total of nine divergences being requested by the applicant, with three additional divergences possible with the current plan set. Those are a divergence from Section 14.03 to permit multifamily in the Planned Commercial District, a divergence from Section 21.12 H 3 B for the light uniformity ratio to be 16 to 1 instead of the 10 to 1, a divergence from 14.06B10, which involves the proposed timetable for development, essentially that the phases would not be defined at this point in the development process, a divergence from 21.01, dimensions of parking spaces. The applicant is proposing parking spaces to be 9 by 18 feet, rather than the 9 by 20 feet, as is required per code. They are also requesting a divergence from 21.01B, which is the paving material. They are proposing that certain areas would be permeable pavers and not the asphaltic material or cement that is required by code. The applicant is suggesting that the Orange Township Fire Department would have to approve that. A divergence from 21.01 for the parking area location, divergence from 21.01E for Phase 1 multifamily for the parking counts, which again, the count would roughly equate to 1.75 parking spaces per unit instead of the three parking spaces per unit required from code. The applicant did request a divergence from Section 21.10, which deals with non-residential uses, being located at least 100 feet to any lot line of a residential district. Staff believes that this divergence request is not strictly necessary, as none of the buildings would seem to be closer to 100 feet to any residential lot line. And again, three additional divergences could be required for the lighting, the building siding, and then the parking lot screening and the landscaping. In terms of additional staff comments, because the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission has not yet reviewed this application, we do not recommend that the zoning commission vote on this matter here this evening. We would like to see the development text be edited to add a provision to make it explicit that no more than 220 multifamily units shall be permitted. Again, clarifying the building siding material, changing the lighting fixtures, or requesting a divergence, same with the shrubs, meeting the code requirement of three feet in height as opposed to two feet. We would like to see more details regarding the amenity area in the center of the site. And then finally, we do note that the site is very well screened from the Columbus Pike right-of-way, and we recommend that similar screening be considered for the Gooding Boulevard right-of-way, including evergreen trees and possible mounding, as the greatest visual impact on existing residents will be from that west sideline and not necessarily from the east. That is all I have for now.
Hey, thank you, Robyn. Can the applicant, would you like to explain your project?
Sure.
And then Eric, if we have graphics that can go with it, that would be great.
Should be on the screen already?
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Robyn, I'm just curious, and certainly an applicant, I mean, all of the notes and the things that you noted here, have there been additional conversations about that, or anything changed since?
We have not received any updated materials from the applicant since this submission.
That's what I wanted to know. All right, thank you.
And actually, if the record could show blessings now in the taking?
Yes, thank you.
And just to get a little of the background, we were gonna have the applicant speak, and then members of the public speak, then we can discuss and make recommendations. But because of the depth of the application, the number of people from the public who want to speak, and the fact that we don't have Delaware County planning comments yet, we should postpone a vote, is the current plan.
That's it, thank you.
Until we can fully discuss and review this.
Yeah.
So, sorry for that aside, the applicant, and please state your name and address as well.
Pete LaRose, Vision Development. Good evening, everybody. My name is Pete LaRose, Director of Site Acquisition with Vision Development. Thank you to the administration of Orange Township for their partnership and guidance over the last year, as tonight, we formally begin what we hope will be a successful rezoning process to allow for the construction of 220 multifamily units. Thank you to the residents of Clear Creek for taking the time to meet with us to discuss their concerns as we work amicably to find practical solutions to all of our needs. Finally, thank you to our partners and colleagues and consultants for their hard work as we strive to bring a highly amenitized Class A multifamily community to the township, one that would provide a critical supply to one of the fastest-growing counties in the Midwest. Briefly, before we present our plan, Vision Development has been constructing Class A multifamily communities since 1994, from Cleveland to Cincinnati and everywhere in between. We are Columbus-based, family-owned, vertically-integrated firm, which means we control the acquisition, development, construction, and property management of our projects. This is a competitive advantage in the industry, as we never relinquish control over any project detail, and quality control is never entrusted to a third party. I'd like to introduce our team as well. Our planning team is led by Todd Foley and Ryan Young with Pod Design. Our engineering team is led by Chris LaScoti, Chris Post, and Dave Samuelson with E.P. Ferris, and Connie Kleema serves as Council to Vision. Thinking about the opportunity at hand, according to Esri, the foremost demographer, between now and 2029, Orange Township will see their population grow by an additional 10%, bringing a need for over 1,000 new multifamily units to help meet the ever-increasing housing demand of the township. Also, according to Esri, there are 13,770 jobs in Orange Township, and 12,600 of those jobs leave the community every evening at 5:00 PM to find housing elsewhere. And not only are these individuals finding housing elsewhere, but their hard-earned dollars, which go towards food and beverage, entertainment, and goods and services, are a benefit to a community not so far from here. With 40,000 cars passing by the site every day, this land provides the perfect location for high-quality apartment units to be developed in thoughtful conjunction with the in-place commercial zoning and the neighboring Clear Creek community. The proposal in front of us today is the first step in the process of bringing together a vision that will, one, help address the housing shortage; two, serve the needs of employers and businesses in the submarket; three, create excitement, demand, and ensure the viability of future uses developed on the balance of the site; four, be a catalyst for healthy economic development along State Route 23; and five, construct a use that will generate far less traffic safety impacts as compared to uses currently permitted in the zoning. I'd like to be clear that while we're here this evening to present aspects of our rezoning application, we fully intend to use comments gathered from previous staff meetings, our community meeting at Clear Creek, and additional comments tonight to assist us in any necessary application and plan refinements. We commit to be cooperative and collaborative partners, and we look forward to being a part of Orange Township in the near future. With that said, I'd like to introduce Todd Foley to present the plan.
Good evening. Todd Foley with Pod Design. We are the landscape architects and land planners for the project, and appreciate your time this evening, appreciate everyone's time in the audience for coming out. Brief presentation here, I'm gonna try to be a little expeditious going through it so that we can allow for appropriate time for everybody to provide feedback, and I do my best not to duplicate things that Robyn has discussed already. But for, just frame of reference again, the site that you see up on the screen highlighted in pink is the project in question that we're here to talk about tonight. You can see the courtyards of Clear Creek Development to the page bottom left, and those are our neighbors, but Gooding Boulevard, you know, being our separator, Home Road to the north, 23 to the kind of page upper left, or excuse me, upper right, and, you know, all the other Home Road development on the other side of the freeway. So, you know, when this project, it's been obviously a life cycle, it's had previous zoning before it, there's zoning in place on it currently from the P C D, and, you know, we are coming in and joining a team of, you know, the property owner, the current development standards for the P C D, that have always been focused on bringing, you know, a high-quality, you know, commercial development and development to this part of the township, one that's walkable, one that celebrates the, you know, the assets that Gooding Boulevard provides, one that can provide connectivity for neighborhood goods and services and things that could come about with the P C D zoning that's in place, that can serve the residents of not only the community directly across the street from us, but also some of the other ones along Gooding, and even regionally beyond the project. So, next slide, please. So, this plan here hopefully will help us kind of highlight the focus of a lot of what we're here to present to you. So, again, north page left, hopefully you can ascertain kind of the three subareas that Robyn spoke on. The page right, subarea, parcel three, rather, that is where the proposed Vision multifamily project would exist, and it would be the only portion on the project that would have residential on it. And we've, you know, all of our standards and designs and text adjustments are all geared towards that. You know, the big question that we've asked ourselves to try to present to everyone tonight and in some of our other meetings is, you know, why, why is this a better plan? Why do we feel like this type of housing in this area is a good thing? And I think Pete provided his perspective as the developer and as a representative of a company that provides this type of housing in the marketplace. You know, from a planning perspective and from a design perspective, we recognize and we're a part of, you know, this ever-changing environment with how commercial is, you know, is built and, you know, financed and designed and experienced by people. The type of commercial, it's different than it was five years ago, than it was 10 years ago, than it was 20 years ago when the zoning originally, you know, took place. So, we feel like this residential use is something that is going to help support what we think is more appropriate kind of neighborhood-scale commercial potentially for this section of the township and what's adjacent to Gooding Boulevard. The density of our project and comparison to the residual acreage for Parcels 1 and 2 is, you know, is gonna create, you know, a balanced development, something that's gonna afford, you know, an opportunity for things to be walkable. People are not necessarily gonna have to be a destinational type of user. There's plenty of people, obviously, that live in the courtyards across the street that could walk to it, but we're providing an opportunity for other residents to potentially come into the township or relocate in the township and experience commercial that could come online there. So we think that's a really positive highlight to bring up. As Pete mentioned, it's a type of housing, not only in the township, but across, you know, the central higher region and beyond, that we're seeing consistently being sought out and balanced with, you know, single-family and other traditional housing product types. We think that this type of residential use is gonna also help kind of scale and soften that commercial use. You know, if you were to go through and just look at the standards that are in place now with the P C D, and the height district that's in place, and we're gonna highlight on some of these things, there's some pretty intense commercial uses that could exist there, and while that may have been, you know, an appropriate thought at the time of when the zoning is, I think there's been, and it's a good thing, I think, an evolution of how, you know, commercial might be experienced in this corridor, and how do we balance that with users and also what's happened on the rest of Gooding from a development perspective and across 23 as well. So, we've looked at, you know, where on this parcel is the best place for the commercial to remain, and where is the best place for the multifamily to exist as well. And when we think about commercial users and where they want to be and the type of things that they place importance on from their business models and also from what they provide the public, they want to be close to those public streets, they want to be close to major intersections, they want to have visibility, all those type of things. And so that's why, you know, we've chosen Parcel 1 and 2 to stay, you know, as contiguous to what they were originally zoned, and we've taken the residential and put it in a part of the, a portion of the site that we think helps transition a little bit to, you know, the adjacency, the adjacent users on the west side of Gooding, and then also some of the other users throughout the corridor. So, we also think, you know, obviously, traffic is a continuous kind of companion challenge and opportunity and concern with growth. And I think, you know, with the study that ODOT's doing on 23, that highlights just the, you know, the much larger global thing that's being studied. But we also think, and we will talk a little bit about it, but what we heard from some of the residents that we were fortunate to meet with is, you know, Gooding Boulevard is, has its challenges from a traffic perspective, and, you know, this site has always been earmarked for development. It's approved to be developed today, and there is traffic needs that would come from that. There are clearly responses and actions that come from those developments in the form of improvements and things like that. But from our perspective, that balance of commercial and this multifamily use, our traffic needs are, we're definitely going to be part of that contribution of increased traffic, but it's gonna be on our portion a much reduced impact because of the type of traffic that multifamily creates. That's a high-level comment, there'll be more opportunity to talk about detail on that. But, so we think that that is gonna help balance some of the issues and concerns that perhaps, you know, the surrounding residents are experiencing, and also some of the things that are occurring at Home and Gooding, and potentially whatever happens and comes out of the study that ODOT has with 23 improvements and what they might suggest for all these different quote-unquote "major intersections" as we move along. So, and as I mentioned, I think it's a really important thing that highlights this type of use adjacent to a commercial, the ability for people to walk or bike and not have to use their car to go to commercial and things like that is, it's an extremely important thing. It's something that's sought out for, I think, by a lot of users, more so than maybe in the past. And so I think this site presents an opportunity where we can truly create vibrancy and mix of uses that can support each other and have kind of a symbiotic relationship there. And, you know, there's so many other great perks to this location with the bridge that can take you over, the pedestrian bridge over 23, we can get you to Mount Carmel to the fitness center, there's obviously the library, North Orange Park, there's a lot of other great things that have pedestrian or biking access. So, there's a very logical, we think, purpose that this site has for this type of use. So, next slide, please. So, just real quick on our process, just so everybody kind of understands who we've talked to and where we've been, I think it's important that everybody understands that we're doing our best to do our homework and we're trying to provide opportunities for feedback and to really come out of this with the best project we can have. You know, this process started for us talking with city staff and members of the county multiple times, actually, on what a project might look like if we, you know, brought this type of use forward. You know, we had, that ultimately led to an informal meeting with your zoning commission that you offer as a, you know, as a service to potential applicants. So we definitely took advantage of that, had a great meeting, I think we got some really great feedback that informed some of our decision-making. We've been in constant contact with the Delaware County Engineers' Office, the clear adjacency to, you know, 23 and Home Road, and the fact we have public streets on all three sides of the project, and in light of everything that's going on with ODOT, you know, that's a critical part of our development. And then most importantly, I think last week, we had, on Wednesday, we had a meeting with the residents on the west side of Gooding and at the courtyards at Clear Creek. And from our perspective, we thought it was an excellent meeting, it was a great opportunity to hear, you know, candid and direct feedback from people who are gonna be impacted by the development of this project. I think we had great dialogue, we heard a lot of things that we took back, and are, we feel pretty confident that we're gonna be able to provide some positive changes to the project potentially. You know, we obviously, in a perfect world, would love to be able to do everything, some things we're not gonna be able to, but we came out of that with some things that we thought will make this project better, and so we'll talk a little bit about that as we move forward with that. But I did, I guess, just wanted to make sure we highlighted some of their concerns for you, and I'm sure they'll also speak to it as well. But, you know, the Gooding Boulevard frontage of our portion of, you know, parcel three, its adjacency to their community on across the street, obviously very concerned about what that looks like, what's the materiality that's there, what's the screening potential, all those type of things. I think generally speaking, nobody's shocked that there's development that's gonna be there, but they definitely have concern about how that relationship of what's developed there reflects what they have currently on their part of the street, and so, you know, that's a very logical kind of comment that I think we can work with. You know, traffic on Gooding, and in particular, you know, increased va- You know, traffic on Gooding and in particular, you know, increased volumes and it sounds like maybe there's some issues with, you know, high rates of speed and things like that that are being experienced through that corridor right now. The intersection of Gooding and Home as development has grown and in the area the use has grown, that that's become a portion of the project that, or the area that has concern. You know, addressing or understanding our parking needs and what that could impact more regionally to the area. You know, we are going to be a private development, they're a development that has public streets. Gooding Boulevard is a public street. So, trying to understand the dynamics of all those and what safeguards can be put in place to ensure that there's no residual effect from any kind of development, whether it's these gentlemen and their company or other development through there. So, we talked about that a little bit. And then concerns about safety and privacy and views from the peripheral into their project, you know, from our proposed units and also a pedestrian scale, but also from their buildings as well. So, those were just some of the highlights. I don't mean to omit anything beyond that, but those were the big concerns that we heard. So, next slide, please. So, the framework that we move forward with, we've spent a lot of time trying to analyze and look at the previously approved zoning, the setbacks, the corridors, the buffering, all those type of things that were put in place. And we've done our best to adhere to those for a variety of reasons. And so, the setbacks that Robin laid out, presently, those are the setbacks we're operating with. And these would be the same setbacks that a commercial development would experience along, you know, Gooding and 23 and things like that. So, that's the baseline of where we started from, that's the framework for how the site plan runs out. Obviously, there's a lot of pedestrian connectivities beyond our site along Gooding, the bridge to the, over 23 to pedestrian bridge. And then ultimately, our access points to the site are earmarked within the framework of what was identified in the previous zoning. They are still subject to approval by the county engineer at this stage, but we have done our best to stay within how those access points were shown previously for several reasons. The big reason is because we already have access points on the west side of Gooding. We don't want to create or exacerbate any kind of situations there. So, that's a little bit as to why the site plan is set up the way that you're going to see. So, next slide, please. This blue area you're going to see with respect to building height, you know, the current zoning that's in place permits a 50-foot building height. That blue area represents, you know, the area within the setback that has the capability of being 50 feet. I'm going to provide some additional kind of dimensional information as it relates to our site plan that we can add to that as we move forward. So, next slide, please. Thank you. So, the plan that we have submitted and that we've been working on, and this is the plan that we also shared at the meeting last week, and there have not been any updates to it since then. We garnered all their feedback, but we're also here to get your feedback. And then we're going to lump it all together and we're going to try to evaluate what we can do moving forward. So, primary access points, again, off of Gooding. One will align with the existing curb cut for the courtyard's development and the lower middle part of the project. We'll have a secondary access point a little bit farther north on Gooding. That secondary access point will take you to the clubhouse if we move kind of easterly across that drive as you come in. And that clubhouse is going to be the main focal point and point of arrival for prospective tenants. That's where all the, you know, the resident amenities are going to take place, both in that clubhouse and then that bounded amenity space area. We've modeled this site design off of some other projects that Vision has done that have been really successful. They put a lot of focus on their resident amenity experience. And while this is exactly like what we've done at other, but the concept of utilizing the buildings to create these courtyard effects that allow for these amenities to exist in an environment that the, have enclosure, that utilize the buildings to kind of give sense of scale and also to create kind of premium units for residents that want to be close to those activities, but then also create on the other sides of buildings, you know, more private type of units that aren't directly adjacent to it. So, you see that center courtyard kind of experience in the middle. The four primary buildings, as Robin mentioned, are buildings J, G, H, and I. Those are the primary residential buildings that will hold the majority of the residential users within them. Those are a combination of three-story and four-story components. The most of the building is at a three-story level. I'll show you architecturally at the end, but the ends of the units have townhouse units on the end. And I'll talk through a layout on that a little bit. But every unit has a pretty substantial exterior balcony or patio area. There's a lot of differentiation architecturally from what you may experience with a traditional multi-family building. The other, some of the other components to the site that you are going to see, the carriage garages along 23, those are six bay garages on the bottom that also have two one-bedroom units on the top. Those are extremely popular and they present a little bit of a different living experience for those that choose to rent but necessarily don't want to be in a building where they have a bunch of other tenants, co-tenants with them. So, those are a pretty popular kind of ancillary use that's provided to the community. And then the northern part of the site, we know our stormwater retention is going to exist in that area. That's, the site kind of breaks into two zones and our site is going to kind of drain to that area. And so, we've been able to make a pretty substantial stormwater feature out of that. We think it's going to be somewhat of a visual amenity from Gooding. It's going to obviously be functional and to help control the stormwater needs that we have to meet. And directly adjacent to that, there are two traditional garage buildings, so no units above them, but just additional garage spaces that residents can rent if they choose to use. So, as I mentioned, all the pavement, all the drives, all the parking, it's all private with inside this project. It's nothing that the township or the county is going to absorb any kind of maintenance with. This is a fully private functioning project from that perspective. And as I mentioned, we're adhering to the previous setbacks that were in place. To expand upon that a little bit, with a focus on Gooding Boulevard, so building H, which really represents the closest building to Gooding that we have, we are approximately 60 feet beyond that 30-foot setback. So, that building really is about 90 feet setback from our public right-of-way on Gooding, which equates to about 125 feet to the center line of Gooding, which equates to about 190 feet to kind of the closest unit on the west side of the road. So, that was part of the other kind of decision why we went with the kind of courtyard design is that we were hopefully able to create a critical mass that was a little bit tighter on the site and would allow us some more flexibility to transition to some of our uses adjacent to us. So, as we mentioned, 220 residential units are proposed. Right now, we've got about 423 parking spaces shown on the plan, and I'll talk a little bit about open space here shortly. So, actually, the next slide, please. So, I think it's important to talk a little bit about open space for our use. We presently are showing approximately 58% of our site. That's represented by all the areas in green, so you can kind of see where that map is done. So, there's a substantial amount of green that's on this site. And, you know, from a use perspective, from a residential perspective, that tends to provide more green space opportunities than, you know, an intense commercial development would. The type of buildings that we're using, the organization of the site that we've done has allowed us to create some larger massing of green space areas as opposed to it being just these tiny pockets here and everywhere. So, we've got some functional usable green space, which is important on, from a private perspective to the site. We know there's a lot of great community green space beyond the site that's good, but we also put emphasis on making sure we have that internal to the project. So, our reduced parking demand comparative to what a commercial piece might be also allows us to have a little bit more green space, which we think is a plus. And, you know, when we talk about the stormwater, having this be a residential kind of use, if this is commercial, there's probably a likelihood that stormwater may be considered to be handled underground and covered over with pavement in order to increase density of, you know, a bi-story office building or whatever kind of commercial use that could exist there. And so, we're able to kind of keep some of that aesthetic balance that we, I think, is appropriate for this corridor. That may not necessarily occur if we were looking at an alternative kind of use. So, next slide, please. Thank you. So, this just highlights a little bit of how the pedestrian experience can exist inside our project. Those kind of oranges-browns lines represent sidewalks and how they connect to the central green area, how we're providing connectivity out to the existing network beyond our property boundaries. The only thing that's missing from this, but it definitely is something that will be explored and provided, is connectivity within our development up to the commercial from a pedestrian experience. We definitely feel that there's going to be an opportunity as the commercial evolves to provide, you know, a very focused, purposeful walking connection to the commercial and most likely occurring up towards the upper page left. But it's a little hard to predict where that ends up until we know kind of how that commercial goes. So, from a landscape perspective, next slide, please. Thank you. So, you know, general comments, we'll meet all the code requirements. I know we had a, we represent our screening would be a little less. That's not, we intend to meet the screening requirements at a minimum with the hedge rows along the property areas. But I think our discussion with the residents of the courtyards at Clear Creek kind of provided an opportunity for us to really think about how we need to beef up what we have along Gooding and how can we do that? And how can we match somewhat of the intensity that they have on their project? There's a variety of plant material, evergreens and shade trees and things like that. So, you know, we're fully committed to looking at that and providing above and beyond what code stipulates with the text that we have now. I know one of the things that was asked about was mounding. There's, we're not quite sure what our capabilities are going to be there right now, but we're considering all these things and we intend to definitely amplify that perimeter edge a little bit with what we can work with. And then, you know, Robin talked a little bit about the lighting. We definitely, we are proposing shorter poles than are traditionally kind of experienced. We're kind of in a, we're at a 14-foot pole and then with the fixture on top, it's roughly 16 feet. Sometimes you can see that creep up as high as 20 feet. So, we've brought the poles down a little bit more in an effort to try to, you know, keep a little bit more of a residential scale. The fixtures themselves will be, you know, full cutoff, they will be downlit. We'll take a look at that cut sheet to make sure we're identifying that correctly, but we thought the fixture we have, it's an LED fixture and so LED fixtures are always downlit from that perspective. It's not something that's washing back up into a housing. So, we definitely will look at that. And we're meeting all the standards that the township outlines for lighting along our perimeter boundaries. You know, zero foot candle, so we're not having a kind of light trespass at the end of the property perimeters, most especially our western boundary where I think it's most sensitive there. The buildings themselves will have fixtures as well, you know, within the resident patio areas and at the main entries to the breezeways to get up into the building. So, transitioning to the discussion about the building, next slide, please. So, from a standpoint of kind of overall kind of thematic aesthetic kind of approach, you know, this is kind of a classic kind of durable materials and colors approach. We really, you know, we're not trying to emulate directly any of our neighbors, but we're kind of understanding what's in the area and, you know, colors and materiality and things like that. So, you're going to see a mixture of stone veneer, the LP smart siding, which is a composite wood siding, and then hardy cementitious siding will be the three primary building materials. We did have a couple of our elevations that identified vinyl as siding materials and that was a somewhat of an embarrassing type of, that is not our intention at all. So, the garage buildings and some of the trim and things like that that was permitted in the previous text will have vinyl components to it. But the main siding material, the horizontal, the vertical siding will either be the LP smart siding or the hardy board, depending upon whether applicable. You're going to see vertical board and batten type of siding, traditional horizontal lap siding. There's some different panel configurations that are going to show up on some of the different buildings. So, there is a focus to have a differentiation for materials and where they exist. We don't want to be, we want to have some, you know, kind of homogeneous feel to it, so we tend to not vary too much beyond that. But overall, you should see some more materials and colors and use of stone and things like that to try to create that kind of comprehensive feel across all the project, all the buildings. The, you know, from a building design perspective, there's a lot of different articulation in the facades that are, we're trying to create that architectural interest, provide some building relief, so we're not looking at flat buildings, that we're getting shadow lines on the buildings, that we have different types of roof peaks so that there's, again, some interest. The images you see on the plan now, the top images are front and back of the community kind of clubhouse facility. It's been designed to look like a series of smaller buildings that have, you know, been brought together, kind of a purposeful design. It helps kind of remove the monolithic kind of feel that sometimes clubhouses can have and bring it down into more of a pedestrian kind of scale. The middle renderings that you see there left and right, there will be a separate fitness facility that Vision has as a hallmark of their projects. It's a, it is a huge building, very tall arch ceilings like what we have in here. It's a CrossFit type of project, roll-up garage doors. The end unit that you see there on the right, the doors actually sometimes will slide left to right or there'll be garage doors that are up. Extremely popular and that's something that's located in the central amenity area. And then the bottom elevations we have there are the frontages of the carriage garage on the left, which has the Juliet kind of balconies on the front and then the traditional just garage building that exists on the north side of the site there. So, kind of a warm neutral color palette, again, to kind of complement the environment that we're coming into. And the larger buildings, let me switch to the next page. They're going to see an introduction of kind of some larger timber framing up in some of the peaks of the roofs and it translates to some of the porches and patio areas. This is a building that Vision has built in a couple other different locations. There's a project in Westerville that's adjacent to Allen Creek there on the west side of Otterbine, back north of St. Anne's, in that kind of area. There's also another project out in Hilliard, the Sugar Farms Development. That's the most recent version of this type of product they've built. And it is a larger footprint building, but it's intentional in that respect. It allows us to, rather than have, you know, more buildings that we would need to achieve the kind of 220 units that we're targeting, this allows us to do things like, you know, more of the open space that we're talking about, allows us to combine and create those central courtyard areas. You can see every unit has a pretty substantial balcony area. And those end units that you can kind of see, there's a little bit higher relief on the roofs. Those, each one of the ends of the units of the buildings, that's where those two-story units exist on either end with the rest of the primary part of the building being three-story internal. So...
Could you share again, where did you say this product is currently?
Yes, sir. And I'd be happy to give direct information to Robin and to Shu. If, in Westerville, just south of the road that takes you to Otterbine. Cooper, thank you, Cooper. It's on Cooper Boulevard, I believe, which is the road that takes you on the north side of St. Anne's Hospital. of St. Anne's Hospital. That is a project, that was the first time that this product was built and then, but a more recent version of the product is probably more applicable to how this would play out. Some of the materials might be different is out in Sugar Farms, which is out off of Hilliard New Rome out west on, west of Renner Road. It's a large master planned community, has single family from, from Pulte and a few other developments, but that's, that's another location where that is shown there.
Quick question. The end units face that way, right? Do you have elevation on one of the end units because one of them seems to be facing on the Gooding Boulevard?
If, if maybe, I'm like two more slides and can we pull up the packet and we have the elevations in there and that might help talk through the composition of those? I can tell you, the, the last kind of set of patios that you see there, porches, and then you see kind of the dark shadow areas, which is the, the internal breezeway stairways that get you up to the units. That last area there, the, the top four kind of porch areas or patio areas up above, that is one unit that has all four of those kind of patios. And then, the end unit that we'll see has three units across it and then the other side of the building has, so there's five units on either end building that are, quote-unquote, two-story. All the other portions of the units are all flats and they're all three, three-story up the middle. And that's the same between both building types that we have there, so. So, to, I want to do, I guess, two quick things that, we can leave this up or, actually, I tell you, if you want to go to the last slide, we can, I can kind of talk through. So, I want to provide a little bit of just feedback on, on traffic. That was a big part of the discussion we had and there, a little, some, some developments since we even met with our residents, the, the, excuse me, the neighbors last week, but our traffic consultant has recently submitted our traffic study. It was completed actually yesterday and submitted to the county engineer. So, it was, it's been in process for a while and was formally submitted to the county engineer's office for their initial review, comment, you know, approval, you know, that, that path will go, so that was on the 21st. And, you know, we anticipate sometime in the next 30 days hearing response. That's typical kind of turnaround, but that's, again, just typical, so we'll have to kind of wait and see what happens. But, I think a couple of things I just wanted to highlight from the study at a high level and, and then I think, you know, as, as we continue to move through this meeting and the potential next meeting, we'll hopefully have more concrete numbers and things that we can provide. But, the biggest thing that came out of it is that the intersection of home and Gooding, we, we know that any development here is going to provide additional traffic impact to the area, what, before we even get here, you know, a commercial development, any commercial use. Our residential portion of this project is going to, it's going to meet the threshold of where a signal may need to be considered at opening day at the intersection of home and Gooding. So, that's a pretty critical thing that we, you know, that we're seeing. I think, you know, the feedback from the meeting that we had last week is that I think it probably is a long overdue kind of situation for the residents of this area, but from a technical perspective, and that's the merits that we have to go off of with the county, that's what our study has shown. Now, the county needs to, to review all that, they need to provide their feedback. And candidly, regardless of our residential development happen-
You said a single would go on that?
A, a traffic signal. Yeah, yeah, at the intersection.
A single unit, I was like, okay.
And, you know, regardless of our development, so if we, if you remove us from the equation and nothing happens, what the study shows as development continues to grow in this area is that, that future traffic growth, that within the next 10 years, that a signal might be warranted as well. So, I think, you know, a, and again, the, the county engineer has to concur with that, that assessment, but that's our consultant doing the MOU that, that we agreed to with the county and the study and the traffic counts that have been done. That's based off real, real counts and, and all that information, so. We're all hopefully somewhat familiar with what's happening with the ODOT study, you know, and, and so the caveat to what I just talked to you about with the potential signal is, you know, we don't know what ODOT is going to tell us at 23 and Home and, just like any other part of the, the region. And so, while our study shows that that's a solution for this intersection of home and Gooding, we have no way of predicting what the ODOT's going to tell us that could impact. The solution they have there may impact, but, you know, our, our process and thought is that at a minimum, it could, it could be a temporary signal. We have no idea the timeline of 23 and Home, so, you know, I think there are solutions there that I think will benefit the region that our project is going to, is going to trigger. So, you know, we are also in the process of trying to compare, the, the previous studies that have been done were based off of a complete commercial model, obviously, and, and we're now changing the, the dynamics of the uses, and so, you know, there's some analysis that we're, we're doing as well. But, you know, a, an accurate statement is that, you know, the reduction of this commercial acreage, the transfer, transforming it from commercial to residential with an apartment use, it, it's going to reduce the, it's going to result in a reducing in trips per day based on the use. Trips are going to be added, there are going to be residential trips that are going to be added that don't exist now, but they're not going to be to the level of what commercial development would be bringing. Apartments typically generate a traffic pattern that's spread out more over the course of a day as opposed to specific peak times that you see with things like single-family and commercial and, and office and things like that. So, you know, there are some inherent, I, I use the term benefit, it depends on how you're looking at it, but from a standpoint of, of use and, and global traffic, we're going to present, I think, a little bit more of a palatable situation for the region. So, to get back to your question, so the bottom elevation here is the end unit and it's, it's similar in both, actually, it's, it should be the same in both buildings. So, you can see, if we, if we look at the, the corner units, the corner sides of the building and then the, the kind of tan blank panel that's, that's right next to it, that represents at the top one unit and then there's four banks of windows kind of in the middle, two without a, a balcony up top, two with a balcony below. That's another unit and then a third unit on the corner there. So, and then the, the makeup of those units, that second floor element, it's all bedroom space. It's not living room, it's not like an elevated, you know, kitchen or anything like that. You know, the, the true active kind of living spaces at a lower level, the bedrooms and bathrooms are at an upper level, so. And then the two levels below that, those are all single flats, so. Just a few last comments and I'll stop talking. Thank you for letting me go through all this. The, all the conditions that were in the staff report that Robin went over, we are, we're in agreement with all those. We have no, no conflict with any of those. The additional divergences that, that he made reference to for lighting, the building siding and parking lot screen, we're going to clear all those up. We're not going to be requesting any additional variances associated with that. Those are all things that we can deal with, so. And then, I guess, just the, the list of divergence, it's kind of a unique situation. Some of those are already in place with the current zoning and they relate more to the commercial uses. They're not applicable to our site, but we need to keep them in there to maintain the integrity of how that zoning was done originally. So, that's why you see maybe a little bit more exhaustive list of those and if there's any specific questions about them, happy to, to talk through that with you, so. And then, I guess, lastly, the last slide, oh, sorry, I'll, I'll talk through it. We don't need to go back to it. You know, I think, again, just to highlight why we think this is a, you know, a, a, a good change from his, from a use perspective. You know, we are, as I mentioned, we're going to continue to evaluate comments we received tonight, the comments we received last week. We're going to make changes to the plan, we're going to look to, to make it better, the buffering and, and what we can do along those perimeter edges, building locations. One of the suggestions from several of the residents was, was taking a look at those, the carriage garages that we have on 23 and, you know, 23 is 23. I mean, it's, it's there, the, the impact, you know, is there a potential to use some of those buildings on the Gooding roadside to provide a little bit more of an enclosure from a structural perspective? So, you know, there's some, some good thoughts and some good suggestions that we think we can look at. As I mentioned, you know, the, the staff report conditions we're agreeing upon, you know, we really think that, that this use, as it relates to 23 and how it's going to evolve over time, I mean, essentially, ODOT's trying to turn it into, you know, a, a, a true freeway and that dynamic is a little different than maybe how it is today and so we, we think our use is going to be a, you know, a good transition buffer for, for the residents to, to the west and, and to help kind of lessen that intensity a little bit. We think there's a inherent, you know, energy that comes from our project that helps with the commercial that hasn't existed to date and, you know, and I think the property owner feels the same way and I think is excited about the potential that the commercial ground now has additional units and, or, excuse me, additional residents that could, could be, you know, interacting with commercial development. We talked about the traffic volumes being lower, the open space, all those kind of details that we're able to bring and, and the housing product type for the community and, and the format we present. So, we, we feel like we're, it's a strong case to consider and we think it's a good, a good opportunity to improve this area. So, as you mentioned, Christine, lots of information here. We do have a team of people here. We want to hear additional comments and, and any comments you have.
One of the main questions I have after listening to everything was the, your parking situation, because we require three parking spaces per each and you simply don't have the space. So, how, how would, how would that be taken care of?
So, from, from the, you know, industry analysis and also the sites that they produce and operate, again, they, they maintain all their projects from a management perspective, so they're very in tune to how their sites operate post-construction, after I'm way long gone from a design perspective. To, to be candid, three spaces per unit for a multi-family is, that's a very high number that's not typically required. I'm not suggesting it's a bad thing, I'm just saying it, it's not a typical thing.
That would re, would require a divergence from, from our code.
And I, we probably were asking that.
Yeah, that was on Eric.
So, the question I have tied to that is, what is your unit matrix? Because, yes, if you're a one-bedroom unit, you probably don't need three parking spots, but if you're a three-bedroom unit-
Sure.
It might, you know, or a two-bedroom unit, so-
Yeah, I appreciate the follow-up question.
We don't, we don't know, you know, you haven't given us a matrix of how many, you know, are these one-bedroom, are these two-bedroom, are these three-bedroom units to get a better idea if your parking divergence is reasonable.
Sure. Yeah, it's a great, it's a, the, the two questions are, are, you know, attached there. So, the method, methodology that we use as a baseline is we look at how many beds do we have? How many beds is the project? One-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? And we provide a parking space per bed as a baseline. And so, I think our initial analysis right now-
We need 50/50.
Yeah, so at a 50, well, it's not truly 50, so we have approximately 16 three-bedroom units and then the residual acreage, residual units are broken up 50/50, so 102 one-beds, 102 two-beds and 16 three-beds. That puts us at 354 beds for, for the project and we're providing at a minimum that one space per bed. Now, we're also providing, you know, we know we need guest parking, we have ADA spaces, we have prospective tenant parking, there's just general additional parking, not everybody will want to rent a garage, so there's always additional parking that we provide over that. And our current plan has four and 23 spaces. We have about an additional 70 extra spaces, 69 spaces over that. And, and that gets, you know, we, we look at our parking distributions, we make sure that we, you know, are all consolidated in one area, so, you know, that's, there is a methodology of why we're requesting it, you know, and I think it's a pretty common approach as you look across the, you know, the industry for, for that type of product type.
So, it, the bedrooms, again, 16 three-bedrooms, 102 two-bedrooms and 102 what?
One bedrooms.
One bedrooms, okay. And then, you're, just similar to, to, you're saying, kind of like what you're seeing in industry standard and so forth, the other properties that you've built, how many bedrooms and then how many parking spaces do you have at them?
So, you know, the beds are obviously going to vary based on the site design, but the ratio at which we provide that, that one point, we're asking for 1.75, that's a sweet spot from a parking perspective. Some sites may have a little bit more, some actually have a little bit less. And we have, you have a project down in, in the short north area on Fifth Avenue that has, you know, and because there's a lot of urban parking around there and everything like that. So, we have to think about the dynamics of where we're going. What are the, you know, they, it's a problem if they don't have enough parking close to their units. That's a big problem from a, from a renter perspective. And, you know, there's no parking allowed on Gooding. We, candidly, the sites that I've been having on, a lot of sites where we've never had issues with parking going beyond the projects. And so, I think the ratio we're providing here, if you do go out to Sugar Farms, you're going to see a very similar parking kind of approach there. That's City of Columbus, but I think those standards were right around 1.7, 1.72 kind of in that area, so.
And this includes the garages or?
That does, yeah, yep. The way that the carriage garages work with the units above, if you're a tenant in one of those units, you get a garage space. So, we actually, that parking gets applied directly to those 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, there's 12 units, their parking is built into that, so. And then the other ones are obviously an, an option for residents to, to rent on a monthly basis.
So, you're essentially taking care of all the divergences and that includes the vinyl? So, you were not, not going to be using vinyl or?
The, the, yeah, the siding, that, I apologize, like, that's, that was a bad typo. We, we talked about this at the very beginning of the project, that our siding, our primary siding field, so the horizontal siding, vertical, all that kind of stuff, it, it's not vinyl and so that, that will be fixed. Whenever we come back with, with all the other kind of things will be-
But you are going to use some components of vinyl.
Like, like some of the trim pieces and things like that, like around windows and, and high up, like, those are, and those are all spelled out in the current zoning text that we have and, and that's pretty common kind of, it's a maintenance kind of thing and, but, but not, you're not going to walk up and see big expanses of horizontal siding and things like that, so.
Just my own information, Robin, with respect to the new code versus, these divergences came from our standard code that's written.
Correct. The standard code and the development plan that's already in place.
Okay, and right, because again, I realize, we've gone through this, this was already designed for commercial and stuff for all those properties and it was, it was already planned. With, with respect to the, the new code and any of these divergences, would those affect any of those? I know I probably shouldn't even be talking about it.
Well, I- I said, because we didn't get a chance to dance in that ballpark last time.
But I know that, that's potentially near future.
Yeah, possibly. I did not review it under that lens. Again, we are working with the code that is approved and adopted.
Working with today's, today's bit of information. Okay.
One thing I want to understand, I, maybe I'm misinterpreting what you're saying, but you said something about the current, with its current zone, you need to preserve some of those requirements in order to do some things here. I mean, is that, yeah, I presume you spell those out in divergences if you're going to move to a whole new zoning story, but yeah, I want to preserve some of these older things you're actually have asked for a convergence in that.
So, specific to what I was referencing, so we have a, there's a PCD in place in the entire, you know, acreage of the project. And so, we are not removing the commercial component from the two parcels to the north.
Okay, yeah.
And so, what I was referring to is we need to make sure that all the standards that were already approved previously continue through. We want to make sure we maintain the integrity of the overall zoning. And then, some of the divergences that you'll see are, you know, for use and, and things like, there are some new divergences that are because we're, we're coming online as a residential use. Some of those divergences though are applicable to the commercial project and were approved previously. And, you know, if, if it's helpful, when we come back, we're obviously going to be providing new materials, we can actually maybe denote the ones that are carryover so that it's easier to kind of understand, having to do that, so.
That could be very helpful.
Yeah, I, I do think that would be helpful. One thing I would point out that I didn't explicitly mention in the staff report, so essentially this, this development plan amendment breaks down the existing parcels into sub-areas, so the, on- So the, on the screen, the tan shaded area is listed as parcel two, then their residential portion will be listed as parcel three. So it does specify, you know, these standards apply to portion, you know, portion three only and portion two, so it does separate those out.
Thank you.
Going back to your comments, what, eighty-plus percent of the township, working population leaves the township to work somewhere else, right? And one development is not going to change, one development is not going to change that. Over time, many of these developments will be needed to change for walkability to commercial and more commercial jobs need to be done. But with that respect, and also given the dynamics of where we are in terms of income, majority of the folks, renters typically, what we see is both partners, even in one-bedroom houses, need to work, travel to work, need two cars. So, the parking situation is not just simple, one point seven-five is that good? We can't say that because in today's day and age, both partners need to work to maintain a lifestyle that can afford all this township and this area, right? So, that means, is there a way you can increase parking space to meet the code?
To meet, well, it's, to meet the code of three per unit, I mean, our approach in the balance of the site design and to maintain setbacks and all those kind of things, you know, there's not going to be a way to add three spaces per unit. But, we have approached the site design knowing that if we have three spaces per unit, there's going to be a lot of asphalt that's never going to be used and there's a lot of green space that that's taken away from. I don't discredit what you're saying at all, you're right, I mean, you can have a one-bedroom unit, they can have two people live in it with two cars, absolutely. So, but I, it, the metrics and the methodology that they use with their projects and that we use and that we study when we work with municipalities and when we study these, you know, that kind of one point seven-five, you know, to two, you're kind of in that range is, it's appropriate and it's consistent. So, we can definitely, as a part of our, when we look at this, we can look to see if there's opportunities to add some additional parking and maybe try to drive that ratio up. I think it might help everyone. But I, I want to be careful, I don't want to kind of move away from some of the other things that we're doing too, the green space and all those other kind of things. So it's a balancing act, so, but we can, we can definitely look at it.
Or can you reduce the number of units?
We're going to evaluate all the comments tonight, I don't want to represent that we're just going to release.
Cause that was, the one point seven-five makes perfect sense for like Columbus, but that's also, like you said in the short north, it's more of a walkable community. Up here, we're very much automobile oriented. And so, we're assuming, you know, two people per unit, two cars per unit, minimum, pretty much. You know, I agree, maybe three might be a little excessive because, you know, it's probably going to be, you know, if people are in a three-bedroom or, you know, a two-bedroom, maybe they're kids or something like that, they're not driving. But I think a good rule of thumb is at least two cars per unit for both adults, I'm assuming, are going to be living in a unit. So, I know there's also concern about the height. Generally, residential is capped at thirty-five, commercial is capped at fifty feet. Do you have the drafted elevations to pull up? Because I'm concerned that you're actually, the ones that actually have the dimensions of the heights.
Might take me a minute.
Okay. So, in the township, we establish the heights from the grade plane, not from the ground floor plane, and we establish it to the peak of the roof, not the midline like some jurisdictions. So, I actually think your, if you blow up to their tags on one of the side, your height is actually taken from the first floor, not from the ground plane. So you're actually over fifty feet, so, and I know that's one of the concerns. I'm not opposed to having apartments on this site, I think it would be a good buffer between the residences in twenty-three, but I also understand that if the residences are predominantly one-story, maybe a story and a half, having a four-story, fifty-foot-high building across the street might not be desirable. And so that maybe if you reduced it to three stories, you might be able to get your parking count and provide a better buffer.
And just to add.
Just an idea, but I think that would go a long way to help the community, if that makes sense.
I want to add to that idea before you move to a different idea. Especially on the corner units, I ask the elevation on the corner units specifically for that because your unit number H, I think, is facing directly towards the Gooding Boulevard. And the fourth floor on that side will have two balconies that are really up high watching the residents. That too, you may have to take a look.
So, and now I'm going to switch a little bit, but this is just one comment with, on the site plan. I'm assuming it's a wet pond as opposed to a dry pond?
Correct.
Okay. Cause I know one question the township has was regarding amenities, you know, walking paths, are you going to have walking paths around the pond, benches around the pond, walking paths around the community, things like that would be better if they were spelled out in the development text so people know what they're getting, if that makes sense. Cause right now it's a little vague. It looks like a pool, it looks like, I don't know, pickleball court or who knows? But, something to define it as opposed to leaving it sort of up in the air. And then, the other question I had was about mailboxes, because it looked like on your plans, the mailboxes were attached to the fitness center as opposed to the clubhouse. And I was curious around the logic for that, because usually people drive up to get their mail and the postman likes to drive up to drop off the mail?
So, that varies, the projects that you, the reference imagery and stuff, that particular project was close to pavement and it worked.
Okay.
And in this case, we anticipate that we're going to have to probably find a solution that'll happen in the clubhouse.
Okay, so.
Potentially. Really not necessarily about the residents, but more so the post office.
Well, that's what I was going to get at is, because the post office doesn't even allow like single-family residences now to have.
Mailboxes?
Exactly, they want group boxes for neighborhoods. So, I'm pretty sure.
I would not anticipate that happening in the courtyard there, I think we will have a solution.
Okay, so yeah, I would, that was going to be one of my suggestions, is find a better solution, not only for the residents, but definitely for the postmaster so he'll approve it. And again, sort of defined what those amenities would be. And then, I guess, Robin, I know we have, you know, very complicated green space calculations involving retention ponds versus green space and how much a retention pond counts towards your green space. So, work with Robin to make sure you're still in the ratio, but I'm pretty sure that won't be an issue. No, okay. So those were sort of my big sort of comments. Like I said, I'm not opposed, but I'm not, I think some tweaking could be done especially in terms of the residence. So, does the commission have anything else they want to add or should we open it to the residents?
The only other thing was, back to that parking again, I know I'm not trying to lead the dead horse, but you, you changed the length of the sides of the space itself as well? And what's that, was that just so you can get the number that you have right now or, because what is our expectation for that?
So township zoning code is nine by twenty.
Yeah, so you cut off a couple of feet.
That is, that is the approved code that is through the board of trustees. I will say, almost every other community has nine by eighteen.
Okay.
That is fairly industry standard.
And that was, not to interrupt you, that was part of the original zoning. So that is, it's a request we would have made, but it was already part of the previous zoning that came in.
Okay.
And, you know, that's, that's reflective to just, you know, people's choices of vehicle, there's just a lot of factors into it and so.
So, I was going to do a little side, in terms of the drive aisle, do we have a standard for the township for the drive aisle between the parking spaces?
We do not through zoning, but the fire department will regulate that.
Okay, cause right now, I sort of felt it was a wash, because you have like a twenty-six-foot-wide drive aisle.
That's required, that's a fire requirement.
Okay, so.
So you're not wrong, it is a wash. But, but candidly, like, you know, the fire department requires twenty-six foot for their albers and everything, that's the state, the state park code. And if we add not even twenty-one, that's regarding an additional four feet of pavement and, you know, four feet, small number, but when you, when you put that over multiple drive, it's all part of a bunch of things that we're trying to balance, you know, to maintain, so. Appreciate the questions.
All right, yeah, I have no additional questions.
Okay, so then at this point, I'd like to go ahead and open up the floor to public comment. Please, we have a microphone set up, so if you want to, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. I'd like to keep it short, because there's a large crowd here, so if you keep it to like, you know, three to five minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. And then if your talking points are the same as your neighbors, just say they're the same as my neighbor, you know, please, you know, add new comments or new discussion topics is what we're looking for, just to make sure everybody gets their point heard. So at this point, I'd like to open it to public comment, please.
And we want to hear both, if there's any support or against.
Got one left today.
And please remember, we're all neighbors in this community, so be civil.
My name is Barb Towser and to answer your question about parking, they're going to be parking in Clear Creek, because those are public streets. We voiced that concern to Vision before, so that is a concern of ours, we're a, we're an elderly community and we feel there's some safety issues with that. And also, I speak for not everybody, I'm not sure if everybody here, but we do not agree that this change is good. We moved here because it was deemed commercial and retail and we expected to have a one-story, two-story office space and we agreed to that, that was okay. We did not expect to have a monstrosity four-story building looking into the courtyards of our homes and our bedrooms with our grandchildren in there. And I don't think any of you would want that either. So, we're very concerned about the privacy. We had suggested if this private even moves forward with, which we are not, we would not like it to move forward, that the high, the three-story building, three and four-story, if it is that, move to twenty-three and the carriage houses move to Gooding with a further And that was discussed and we were told that somebody did not want the buildings on twenty-three here, I don't know who that is. But, I don't know why that wouldn't make sense to everybody, because if you look at Shanahan and twenty-three, they're building the two-story buildings there that are facing twenty-three. So, why would it not make more sense for our privacy and security and safety to have those facing twenty-three and have the lower ones facing us and then we don't have to worry as much about it? If I may say one more thing about traffic?
Yeah.
So we discussed traffic and length and I know that you just did as well, so appreciate that. But if you don't know Gooding well, right now, the cars go down there at fifty miles an hour, they're speeding, it's two-way. You have kids, you've got the library, you've got two daycare centers, you've got the fire department, you've got kids up and down there on bikes. And I can't imagine these cars stopping at the light by the library to let kids cross the street, very concerned about that. So, all right, thank you.
My name is Mark Pomeroy, I live at two thirty-three Park Gate, I happen to be HOA president at Clear Creek, but I'm not necessarily representing the community here. Sharing a few things, I agree with much of what Barb said, apartments are not necessarily a bad thing, but if we got to have them there, further setback away from our folks, the, putting the garages and the carriage houses on our side makes a lot more sense. Having more of a buffer, I know we talked about this last week, thanks guys for coming last Wednesday. Mounding, why couldn't there be mounding there? I understand for you, three feet high, you need nine feet wide at the bottom, let's do it. And put trees and bushes that are larger and thicker on both sides of Gooding. I would hope that Vision would, would help fund the additional trees and mounding on our side. The, if you come out of that north entrance, the way it's designed now, those lights are shining right into the back of a couple of courtyards. And that's where the guests are leaving parties and coming out of there, those lights could go on how late, even if they shut the pool down at ten o'clock. The pool should be shut down at nine o'clock and close the garage doors on the fitness center at nine o'clock so that the party doesn't extend to the outside. I'm trying to keep it short. Safety on Gooding. As Barb said, the traffic is crazy, it's so easy to go forty, we do it. So, and this is probably not up to Vision, I don't know if it's up to township, but why not put a four-way stop and a three-way stop at each intersection? It'll slow us all down, somebody's going to hate it, but it's going to slow us down and it will slow the additional traffic down as it goes up and down Gooding. The traffic, we require, we, I called the county and asked about a light at Gooding and home, they sounded like it wouldn't work because it's too close to twenty-three. If you can do it, great, but at least put a bright streetlight there. There's no residents that would be, that would be, where that light would shine into their homes right there, but a streetlight up on the one existing pole, if not also another pole. I don't know if speed bumps are allowed in Orange Township, but that would be another way to slow the traffic down. I know in Worthington where we used to live, they didn't do them because the snow were mild. Parking, our streets are public, you've heard this, if there are not more spaces, when they've got big parties over there, people are going to park on our streets, which is allowed, they're public streets, on one side parking is allowed. And then they might even cut through some, some open spaces to get over to the shortest distance to the party if they park on Star Hollow. And I really appreciate Vision saying, I might have three minutes, that they stick around, both build and manage the property as it goes forward. Can we get a commitment that's going to go on indefinitely? I don't know if you can sign perpetual contract.
That's, that's, that's like asking you to stay in your house perpetuity, okay? So, I understand where you're coming from, but let's be honest.
So, do something more practical, if they, if Vision moves out within ten years, then have some consequences. Just throwing out ideas, I emailed that to Robin.
So that is why it's very important what's put in the development text for this site so that if something happens and they do move on, the zoning goes with the site. So, that is your protection for that development.
But zoning, how does zoning help with how they're going to manage the property? Cause they seem like they're doing a good job in other places.
That's what I'm saying, is that if, you know, we can't control the future, we have no idea what's going to happen in the future. The zoning text, you know, like I said, if another recession comes along, if there's another, I don't want to say, you know, COVID epidemic or whatever, we have no crystal ball when it comes to development and finances. Zoning text and the development text is sort of your protection if the property changes ownerships. The zoning would have to be rezoned.
With the limitations of what zoning can do, right? Yes, only within the limitation of what zoning can do. Management companies manage the property, this apartment complex, it is what it is.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Thank you, Les.
I want to thank the Director Duffy for not only the opportunity to be here today and for all of their help when we were first getting started in terms of what our responsibility is again. And I want to thank the Commissioner for allowing me to have this opportunity. Now, this site.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Jack Reardon, or John, I guess.
And your address, please, John.
All right, although this site.
Jack, your address.
Oh, seven zero two zero Star Hollow Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now this site is the principal source of water for Clear Creek, which is the name of our organization. Now, it's a part of a national, or a protected nature area by the Ohio Environmental Society, higher, the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. And I believe that part of this site was included in that protection. And I did not notice that you had dealt with the environmental protection. And I did not notice that you had dealt with the Environmental Protection Agency. Now, in addition to being the source of water, it is also the, a source of drainage that enters into the flow of, to, to the Clear Creek. Now, the major building that you proposed on this site is directly over the access to this nature area. Can I show you that? All right, see here? That main building, this great area in here, pardon, is the, is the area within our community that is protected under the Environmental Protection Agency. So, any drainage, anything that goes in there is part of that, could contaminate them. Now, I don't know about everybody else in our community, but I bought my site primarily because of the nature area that it was built around. And I find that this development is not conducive to that original purchase. And that that is going to be a difficult for me to deal with. I just want you to know that.
If I could, if I could make a comment, um, generally, the environmental issues are handled by the county. Um, and as part of due process, when the site is developed, their civil engineering plans have to be approved by the county, and they will have to get the permits they need from the EPA. Uh, because you are correct, generally, half of the township either flows into the Olentangie and the other half flows into Allen Creek. So, either way. Olentangie, which is a protected waterway, or was a protected waterway. It's un, it's unclear what the current status is. But the county, uh, would have to approve any of those items. Um, so, that is something that's sort of above township level. But I hear your concern.
Uh, hello, uh, thank you for organizing this meeting. My name is Yuri Starik, and I actually have two properties. I live right off the home road on Nudge Brook Drive, and also, I bought my parents' house on Clear Creek, right off the Gooding on 219 Restoration Drive. So, if I understand purpose of this meeting, if I understand currently the zoning is commercial office, but not for the commercial slash office, but not for the big box, am I right?
Correct.
And we discussing changing it to, uh, to that residential. So, I don't understand what is the benefit for us as a current people at all. So, I understand that, uh, the system people say that there will be bicycle rides. I see 500 cars driving by, so I don't see any benefits whatsoever. I don't see it being Evans Farm with the restaurants. I don't see any businesses. I just see residential. Um, I'm driving by home road every day to the school, and I'm sometimes waiting for two traffic signs, traffic cycles on the home and 23. Two. Each cycle is about three minutes. So, 500 more cars, should we wait for 10 minutes, 20 minutes, ever? So, I think this is unbelievable, actually, to me. Because even now, the traffic light is two cycles. Any school bus, you wait. Right? So, I don't see any benefits. I see 500 cars. I see the traffic light, uh, being huge problem. Uh, I understand that you think that maybe in 10 years, we'll need to add another traffic light on the, uh, Gooding and, uh, home. Maybe, or maybe not. If you'll put 500 cars, we'll need to put a second traffic light. So, now we'll have two traffic lights, one is the Gooding and home, and then another one, which is takes right now two cycles in the morning to get through. So, um, that's my next thing then. You also said that, uh, if you increase the volume, the people will walk there. I don't see anyone walking in the parking complex. So, when I bought my parents' house in the beautiful Clear Creek, I worried because of peaceful, beautiful, quiet, and safe, and very little traffic. Kids are going, my kid is going on the Gooding all time on the bike. I will be terrified. There's 500 cars in the morning and in the afternoon going to the, to the place. Um, and, uh, I think this is the main thing. So, I think the subject is not what the kind of LED lights you guys have and what kind of siding the buildings have. I don't understand why we need this building. We, as the people who already live there, how do we benefit from this? I think it's just going to destroy my parents' lifestyle. They're 80. They would try to walk on the Gooding towards the library with 100 cars zooming by. I don't think it's safe. And it's not safe for my son to ride the bike there either. Uh, thank you very much.
Tom Reeves, 6908 Star Hollow. Um, I think we were supposed to say if we agreed with all the other comments, and I agree with all the other comments. Um, the one additional one that I would like to make is that when you look at the DOT study for 23 and the presented options, um, the first two options that are presented turn Quarterory Road into a right-turn-only option, meaning that the only two ways out of the neighborhood would effectively be uh, Gooding intersecting with Home Road on the north and Gooding intersecting with 23 on the south. Um, the, uh, so two of the options. The third option actually eliminates any access for Quarterory Road to 23. And so, that would send essentially all of the traffic from Clear Creek and this development out Home Road. Home Road in, that, that intersection is not built for it. That, that's gonna be a massive safety issue. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Sheff. I live at 7015 Star Hollow Lane. Um, my husband and I live in a house that backs up to Gooding. Um, I'll be honest, we're not happy with this amendment request. We would prefer that it stay, uh, commercial. When we bought our house three years ago, we were, we chose the lot. We were okay with that. Now that they're trying to flip it to be residential, um, we're not thrilled with it. However, um, I'll ditto all of the comments by our, our neighbors about, um, the changes that we would like to see with their plan to create that larger buffer zone for us from a privacy perspective. Um, and the other thing I just want to say is, you know, we are all owners of our property over there. We've made a commitment to Orange Township. My husband and I have actually lived in this township for 21 years. We lived just down the street for 18 before we moved across to 23. And I just hope you take into consideration those of us that are owners and have made a commitment to be here versus the transient population of renters into that apartment complex.
Hi, my name is Roger Joffe. I live at 7009 Star Hollow, and it'll be directly across from me on, across from Gooding. The fact that they're gonna be four stories high, they're gonna look directly into my courtyard. And I, it's, takes away from my privacy and my quality of life. They're gonna have, uh, probably young people. Their quality of life is gonna be affected, uh, it's gonna affect mine. They're gonna have late-time parties. There's gonna be cars in and out of that property continuously. I would rather, would say, commercial office area, like was explained to me when I bought my house. I agree with everything else everybody else said. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bruce Massa. I live at 225 Park Gate Court. I know the developer, um, and I think they're quality people. That said, the infringement on the privacy of the people on the west side of Gooding is too impactful. There is no reason why they can't slide the site plan a little to the east, move the carriage houses to the west side of the site, backing up to Gooding. That will, that would, that would alleviate some sound that's in the apartment, apartment project. And also, it would push the, push the buildings back just a bit. On that setbacks that I see from Gooding, their plan was to do three-foot bushes. Not gonna work. A three-foot mound with evergreen trees. A three-foot mound means nine feet wide. There is nine feet between that, the setback, and the first row of parking. There's enough room there. I think the people on the west side of Gooding, namely, first house coming in on the south side and first house on the north side of Daymark and the, the first house to the west or to the north of the wooded area are gonna catch every headlight from the cars that are coming out. Plant some trees on the west side of Gooding. It only makes sense to be a good neighbor and start out that way. These trees need to be sufficiently close, so in a very short time, they provide a visual break to those homes and their courtyards. I agree with the other points that the folks made. I wish you all luck, and I wish you'd take these comments under advisement. Thank you.
My name is Richard Kite. I live at 326 Park Gate Court. Most of what I was going to say has already been covered. I appreciate the Commission's attention. You've obviously listened to what residents have had to say and by your questions and concerns, most appreciated. The only thing I would ask is, I'm not a math person per se. If someone could help me understand density. Because it appears to me that, um, the township, by and large, has a maximum density of eight units per acre for multifamily residential. The applicant has explained to me that they're under eight units because they count the entire 30-some acres of the site in their density calculation. If this is true, when and if I ever sell my house, I'm selling it with the woods behind me that I don't own. Um, that makes no sense to me. Robin has tried diligently to explain to me that because this is still PC and not multifamily, there is no density limit. That makes no sense to me either. So, that's my comment. And please don't applaud. I don't want to be connected with the rest of these people.
It makes you feel better. I had a similar question, but yes, it's the, um, planned commercial. It's not being rezoned to multifamily. It's staying planned commercial. Hence why there is going to be, my understanding, and Robin, help me if I'm wrong, a divergence to allow multifamily in a planned commercial.
That is correct, and, uh, so the, our density limit on multifamily isn't necessarily just multifamily applied for each district. So, there are multiple types of districts. So, in our MFPRD, the limit is four, and the PERD, uh, limit is six, uh, and the RCOD, the limit is eight. Uh, so it, it depends on the, uh, district in question and not necessarily the type of housing. Uh, again, since this is a planned commercial district, uh, the divergence, uh, where the, uh, proposal differs from the code is to allow multifamily at all, uh, so density becomes a choose-your-own-adventure of sorts.
Thank you, Robin. Do we have more members of the public?
Yes, one more.
Good evening. My name is Roger Ricker. Live at 145 Daymark Drive. My home is opposite the entrance to the, one of the primary entrances to the project. I'm generally not an emotional guy, but this one has me riled up. Most of the people back here have spent $65 million of their own money developing the Clear Creek community. They bought their lots, they built their homes, and they're in a safe place. Most of us are in the fourth period of our life. We don't want to have the end of it ruined by some other events that we have an opportunity here tonight to put stake in the ground. We want to move forward, but we also want to move forward cautiously and safely. It's up to you folks to make those decisions. It's up to us to comment, give favorable comments to those things that we like, disagree when we can, and be safe, be knowledgeable, and be fair. Thank you.
Hi, Elaine Damos, 6990 Star Hollow Lane. I just want to say, I would greatly appreciate flipping the carriage garages to the front, reducing the noise, reducing the elevation to the neighbors right on Gooding, but that still doesn't solve the traffic and the parking problem. So, unless they reduce the number of units in this piece of land, we'll still have the parking spilling over to our neighbors and just the extra traffic on Gooding. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, uh, Les, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, just real quick for the developers, um, how many meetings did you have with the community already, or just one or?
Yeah, last week was our first meeting.
Oh, okay.
And our, our intention, leaving that meeting was, we knew we had just set up with you.
Yeah.
Um, we knew we had feedback from them. Um, as I mentioned in the beginning, we want to get your feedback.
Yeah.
Um, there's some new comments, some new people that weren't able to tend to be here to speak, so this is an opportunity for us to get more of that.
Yeah.
And we're gonna go leave from here, and we're gonna evaluate how we can take the next steps. Um, we'll try to figure out what the best response is, if it's in this venue, if, does it, talk with them again? You know, we, we have good line of communication with them, and, you know, we know there's gonna be things we disagree on, but we, we absolutely are gonna be transparent and open, and that's, that's, that's not their way to turn, you know. That wasn't a formality last week. That was, you know, so.
Yeah, so that was kind of my general gist, I mean, whether or not these comments you've heard today, whether or not some of those were new. And, um, if so, you know, as you make changes or make considerations, whether or not you're planning on meeting with them again, I know it's not necessarily a requirement, but just wanted to know if that was part of your overall.
I mean, I think the most important thing at all is, is the response to the comments.
Yeah.
Um, the venue and the manner.
Yep.
We can debate that, but I think, and, you know, a lot of the comments were the same. There were some new ones, but I, I think, um, you know, we've, we left the meeting last week. We were already kind of like in our head thinking about, okay, how, what does that mean, move the carriage garage? Like, what is that impact? And, and so I, I think, I'm confident that we're gonna be able to come back with some things that, that start to check some of those boxes and, and improve the plan.
Does the Commission have any more comments or questions?
Yeah.
No? Okay, um, so it seems like the next steps in my mind would be, um, formulating the comments. Uh, Robin, is that a possibility for you to, your comments? Uh, do we know when, um, the county's comments are coming in?
Uh, so regional planning meets later this week.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to seeing what they say as well.
Okay, so, um, regional planning comments should come in in about, later this week? Um, they already have your comments, uh, from the planning and zoning staff. Um, we don't write out formal comments for the Commission anymore.
Not formally, but I, I can kind of collect a summary. I, I am sure the applicants are here taking notes as well.
I'm, candidly, I'm quite confident we have a lot of that, so I don't want you to expend a lot of energy on that.
All right, that was my next question.
I'm happy to entertain that, but not if they spend, we, we have.
I, I will leave that up to Robin then, because we're all, um, volunteers up here.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we, uh, Mr. Pomeroy, you know, with the HOA, we've made it clear, like, if there's any other questions, things like that that come from their residents, the last meeting after this one, you know, open a lot of communication with Pete, and, and it gets back to us, like, we really truly intend to try to be good neighbors, so we'll try to figure a solution out, so.
Okay, um. Yeah, I was gonna say the next. Yeah, I was gonna say, the next, what was that?
Do you plan to resummit some of the architectural changes before we vote, or?
This evening?
No, no, no. Taking in all the comments before we vote this time.
Yeah, I think as you led off with, you know, I don't wanna speak directly for you, but our intention is, there's still things that we can address. And I think it's our intention to not sit here and say, we want your, like, we know we need, there's a process here. And so I think it would be best for us to, you know, request continuance, or you, I guess, would love your advice of how you want to do it.
That's, I was gonna say, that would be my advice, would be to formulate all the comments, address them, rework your proposal, or your development plan, whatever you want to call it, and we can continue this meeting to another date, hopefully with your revised plan. You can still meet with members of the public community to try to tweak your plan, and I'm sure Robin will also be available. So the question is, when do you think, what is your timeline? Generally, I'd like to have a date before we conclude this meeting, so it can be a continuance.
I think November 12th was when we were considering...
Okay, I think we already have, I think we already have a meeting that day. So I was gonna say, what is our next available?
So the commission has regular meetings scheduled for November 12th and December 10th. Up to the commission, we could add this continuance on to one of those meetings, or we could set a special meeting date for November 19th or December 3rd.
Given the amount of comments and the amount of things we made...
Yeah, I would suggest, due to the number of people here and members of the public, that we just have a separate meeting to hear this, as opposed to try to add it on to something else, which would make for a little confusion in a very long meeting. If that is all right with the applicants?
It is.
Okay.
I recommend that December the 3rd date probably would be best post Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so I...
Folks are...
Yeah. Definitely not the 26th, because that's right before Thanksgiving. So, and then our next meeting, you said, was the December...
12. Oh, the regular meeting date is December 10.
So is the 3rd work with your schedule?
We can make that work.
You can make that work? Okay. So can I have a motion to continue this meeting to December, Tuesday, December 3rd at 6:30?
I vote that we continue this meeting at December 30 p.m.
Motion seconded.
Need a second? Carthage?
Motion seconded.
Those voting, Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Trebelis?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Ivana Dula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, is there any other meeting before the commission?
You have no further business.
All right, then I formally conclude the zoning commission meeting.